Oh, hang on, you're still muted.
Okay.
All right, are we ready to go? I'm ready to go if everyone's ready to go.
Yep, you should be going, we're recording now.
Fantastic, all right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting order. Can do the whole, we have one on the agenda tonight, and that is safer access to neighborhood destinations for sand project briefing.
Great, so I will introduce you to Shavani Wada, she comes west from the city camp, she is a civil engineer three with the department, and we were fortunate enough to be able to get a grant from the office of traffic safety, one of the legacy projects that Benji left us applied for, this is a unique project in itself, and Shavani, I won't go into the details, but it's unique in that it's not being done elsewhere, and it's really a pilot project, what a voluntary traffic safety education, instead of working through enforcement actions and trying to trying to change behaviors to enforcement. Desire to try and modify behaviors through education and understand. So at this point in time, I'll turn it over to Shavani and let her go through the questions.
Awesome, well, thank you so much, thanks for having me here, like Martin said, I'm fairly new here, but my family has been for twenty some years in Stockton County, so we use Renton Parks amenities, so this is like our second home, the little ones, park hopping was something that we did when they were little, so I'm super excited to be part of this amazing program and pilot effort, it is unique, it's using residents navigation and how they're moving around their communities and then advocating and developing educational program and having the traffic safety lens, so I'll get started. So for you, you have some sample of materials that I'll be using to inform public engagement, we have smaller printed out in the back as well, and the QR code for a story map, so first part of the presentation, I will kind of go over the
Shavani? I'm sorry to interrupt, you're not sharing your screen.
So we see it in here, it's not shown.
No, it's not, I'll be right there.
Actually, we go over Judith in the corner there, see if you can it should be a different view, yeah.
Maximize it, yeah.
And then, should be
There, okay, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
We copy over personal.
Okay, so moving now, next slide. Oh, there you go, so this is a collaboration between Washington Traffic Commission and City of Renton, like Martin said, it's unique. Traditionally, it's more of an enforcement program, so the Walker Walk and Roll Safety Grant, Benji applied for that application, and it was awarded, City of Renton is doing pilot programs in two test areas, and we'll go more in detail about why those areas were selected. And so far, we've been collaborating with communication staff, park staff, building on relationships and programs that we could deploy as a program for. So the two neighborhoods that were identified had data four times more of distracted driving collisions in these spaces compared to the next highest dataset in City of Renton, so focusing.
So really, when I read that, saw that, I wondered, does it identify as to why, why that's the case, that just seems like a I think you're outliers or something.
It is high, and as an end user, a mom with kids and biking and pedestrian walking, that's, that's a very high number, there could be a multiple multiple of things, whether language be a concern, understanding how traffic safety or traffic rules or laws operate. So one of the findings not in this city was done is as simple as how to safely cross the sidewalk, cross a pedestrian crossing is not something that people know how to do it, so that was a finding from another research, however, for this two areas, it was just collision datasets that we looked at. So when that application was done identifying the dataset, the data supporting this to neighborhoods, it's going to float up top, that we definitely need to bring or understand how the patterns are, what, what is happening here, so the pilot is actually developed into including elementary school, middle school, and high school and parents and adults, so that's a holistic approach of residents and neighborhoods, and then as professionals for traffic safety, myself, and working with other departments, parks, PD, and seeing where the gaps are, so we'll do analysis later on to address that. So just wanted to share what we've done so far, so the grant was applied in 2021 in March, it was awarded in November of last year. I joined the team April of this year, and most of my focus have been, how do I capture this story, and how do I share this with internal and external stakeholders? So development of the Esri story map with the QR code, shares that, and we'll just, we'll go over that in second part of this presentation, and also how that could be received by residents as a new resident to this space, if people are relocating here, or just trying to know what programs the city's offering and supporting in the Benson Hill neighborhood and West Hill neighborhood. This going back can be transferred into their preferred language, so that's also a unique feature of the Esri story map, and then we're working with communication staff to develop other printable materials for users or residents who may not have access to a smartphone, so we're providing and sharing this information before we drive the community engagement. So the three questions leading this effort is getting to know what are the destinations in your neighborhood, so as a resident, where do you go in your neighborhood? Do you go to the community park, do you go to a church or a school, how do you get there, do you walk, do you take a bus, do you get in a car, do you take a trail routes? And if there's any concerns, are there things that you're avoiding because of X, Y, Z? Engaging the community, and this is where making an effort and meeting the residents where there are already, I will be attending the movie night at Liberty Park this Friday to certain events, engaging the audiences, and sharing how they navigate this space, and then partnering up with parks program which are these two neighborhoods, getting the youth involved and just doing that engagement of fun activity and assessing their current mobility in their space. So the other part of it that I'm passionate about is that empowers youth. There's an avenue of it where you have background in transportation demand management, so not everybody can own cars and drive, mobility is a concern, and as we go with population growth and development, I think traffic transportation demand management is key, so identifying the pattern, especially if it's the first mile or last mile, if you can walk them mile or bike and pedestrian safety is, is key in this pilot. So strategically, there's planned activities, so we're in very first stage community assessment, assessing, asking those questions, these maps will be used for any community engagements. We have smaller maps in the back that we can post and walls, community centers and so forth, from that, we will develop three deliverables, which is a school-based traffic safety deputy academy, so again, using the youth, seeing what they, using the resources that's available, engaging them and having them develop a safer way to walk, whether it be bright colors, crossing safely. And then for high school students is student youth driving council, so as they're transitioning into and starting becoming young adult safety to, as the drivers be mindful of pedestrian safety and bike safety, so they want that, that program there, and then adult responsible driver advisory. And then these have key tasks that's been identified in the grant, and we'll work towards that, and then as, depending on how the community will engage and take, we may change and pivot a little. But the important thing is collecting the data and listening to the residents, because we want to make sure that we're educating them around their current patterns, and if we can improve that experience through traffic safety lens for bike and kid. This is the strategies for first stage assessing to identify the preferred routes, if there's any concerns, design assessment toolkits. The map that we have in the back would be a simple map that's included into community event programs, where the youth may take a green marker and say, I live on this polygon right here, and I go to this park, and this is how I go or I avoid this area, and we use a red marker for that in recent, so engaging more of an experience-based learning. That's, that's for that category there, and then utilizing social media communications to really engage those communities in that space. And partnering up with the community groups as well, so that's key part. And that's where I'll also be supportive, so if you have a community group in this space, if you'd like to benefit from it, I'd love for feedback or group names. Distributing the assessment kits, prefer travel routes, network gap, so once we have enough data.
I'm sorry, I just asked him, so when you am I interested in this correctly, is how you access one point, point A to point B, but with different, in different ways, not just riding, it's a walk-in or use some bicycles, or that specifically, either that I, that you're collecting?
All, pretty much all data, within your community, how do you move around, what are the destinations you go to, and how do you get there?
And I mean, for example, if my choice is, I use my car because I don't have sidewalks, because it's dangerous, because I get safety, for safety issues, the data will provide a space for that kind of response?
Yes.
Okay.
So right now, it's very early in space, but ultimately, the development of a survey to collect those hard datasets would be something will benefit this program. And that's where the Esri story map comes in, I'll explore the interactive web map where you can actually map your routes, and you can input those information, so then we can see, like, in these maps, if you live in a neighborhood, that you don't see a darker gray, then we know that there's no sidewalk.
Yeah.
And that could be a concern as a resident, you know, comfortable walking there.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you, those are great questions. And then end of this strategy, we'll have a summary report, results, stakeholder, neighborhood, traffic safety group, so working even with signals manager and supervisor traffic safety PD, making sure all the city staff are at the table or at those events to answer any questions and provide feedback. Strategy two, and strategy one and two are really the fun, exciting experience, working with the youth in the community, school districts, before after-school care, any additional extracurricular activities. So strategy two is focusing on a little bit older age population, youth, middle schoolers, high schoolers, designing traffic safety activities, supporting materials, co-designing activities for their community. Simple as taking an audit walk from their school to their neighborhood community or park, creating those experiences and seeing what's around them through the lens of pedestrian bike safety, and seeing what how the environment looks, and can we have the behavior change from taking a bike of making sure the helmets are in place, making sure you're using the right side of the roads, and so forth, and then once we have those strategies completed, we'll have graduation. Celebrating those programs being completed. Strategy two. Strategy three is focusing on the youth driver councils, this is where the high school comes in place, City of Renton already has a youth support that we'll be leveraging, so we already have programs within the city that we'll just leverage and engage the audience for these two areas, and then supplement that events, assisting on implementing youth driver council group projects, so if there's a specific group projects that the, the community engagements or the youth engagement comes out of, we'll have support that effort and develop that. And then strategy four is focusing on the older, more of a adult populations. In these two neighborhoods, again, the data was fairly high, making sure if there is any barriers, what it is, how we could improve that awareness, or if it's developing into certain languages, or certain style of traffic safety, once we're at that stage, we could develop that and facilitating that, so one of the things also to point out is the level of, level of traffic stress, so if you're pedestrian walking and you mentioned sidewalk, so we want to be mindful of those experiences and capturing those experiences, and so during any interactions, if you say you live in this neighborhood, and this is the destination you go to, as the person collecting the data will make sure that it's mapped correctly, and we'll look at those identifiers to process and possible choices for outliers that may hinder or increase that level of stress as a pedestrian or a
Any of these maps has the, the, I don't think they have bike lanes included? Show.
Yes, yes, they are.
That's on here.
So it's the very bottom, there's this, existing trails.
Okay.
And proposed.
I should, so the ones that, that we Okay, so we don't have that many, but it's just one of you could
The overlay is from our, the trails of bicycle master plan is what you're looking at there.
Okay, thank you.
So this is the strategy for is coming towards the tail end of it, so it is a two-year program, so we're looking at this strategy for is really here to hop into the program. By that time, we've been done enough community engagements, received some datasets, went back and looked at certain things, and identified city assets to make sure the infrastructures that we have through traffic safety is there, or if it isn't, then identifying that as well. And then developing the community, any area, the projects identified as responsible drivers advice group, so that is the key takeaway. So again, just supporting the youth in this space, and then having them elevate the projects that they see in the framework and the support. The next part of this presentation, I just want to show you the two maps of the area, this literally was printed at five o'clock, so I wasn't sure that I'm going to get this big map for you guys, I'm glad it came in. So this is also shared, I'll share this on the online story map, but it's searchable, it has all your information, you can use a search engine to search magnifying glass to look at your address, and then look at all the neighborhoods, destinations around you, so it's really functional and helpful for classroom engagement for middle school and high school. So where you can get a, you know, twenty, thirty students in a setting and really gauge and collect that experience of what are your neighborhood destinations, how do you get there?
Those maps are relevant.
I have a question.
Oh, you're fine, so when people are navigating this, if they see things that aren't on here, do they have a place where they can, if there's a, like, a destination that's not on the map, do they go to like a childcare center or something that's not on the map, is there a place for them to say, oh, I go here and it's at this address, or?
We can, we'll have to upload that feature, but that is something that's enough base to of that feature, right now is just kind of getting comfortable with the space, and that could be like within weeks that we can upload it, or we can map those, and then provide feedback. So yes, it's very doable.
That's a good point, because a lot of these neighborhoods, the destination is just outside of the area as well.
Yeah, or there's, you know, like, little small areas that may not have been picked up, but that's somewhere that someone goes, like, if there's a childcare center that didn't make it on the map, but that's where they go, or they walk there, whatever, just, you know.
Absolutely, very good feedback, and that's exactly what, you know, our residents will, with community engagement, say, we had our communication staff just looked online and Google, like, Google all these datasets, so.
It's impossible for someone, until you talk to the community.
Yes.
A full depth of rest of where someone might go, so that's why I was asking, because there is a functionality for them to be able to add that in.
Yep, so in a story map that I'll share just after this couple more slides, then yes, absolutely, it's not active quite yet, so you won't be able to do it right now, I just want to clarify that, but yes. So this is the West Hill, similar layout, orienting the users, and again, going back to the middle schoolers, high schoolers, and elementary school students, this might be the first time they see a map of the space where they live in, so having that perspective and having them navigate, but they're early, you know, they can easily adapt to and provide us that information. Yep, that's pretty much the same pilot, it's in the very beginning stages, and now we just have work that needs to be taken care of, and lots of community engagement, working with parks, working with communications, making sure these community areas are sort of researched to address and develop the pilot further.
All right, thank you, I know we've already had a few questions, I suspect there may be a few more. I will, I'll jump in if someone's a burnout, first of all, say, Shavani, welcome, and thank you for the presentation, this was so informative to me, certainly, yeah, the staff had already identified earlier the distracted driving, which happens to be my neighborhood, stood out to me, and then even more so when the crosswalk in this slideshow was my kid's school, so it's like I'm like, okay. Yep. So, and, and great to see the overlay of, of kind of everything we have, bike and field master plan, I definitely really, really love the vision, I know a lot of this built on from various planning documents, going all the way back, or back, or continuing through the Benson Hill plan, I guess the question I have that came from this up out of my head, obviously, I'm assuming we've been doing some level of partnership on the school district throughout this process, and so what, can you tell me a little bit more about what that's looked like, and what sort of input, because obviously, we're talking to students, it sounds like a lot, the district specifically, how have they worked through this with us?
So the district, so MJ Communications and Jennifer and Parks are my supporters, so I'm going through them, navigating that space, but it's, right now, school is sort of out, so it's summer, but connecting with this Renton innovation lead community.
Oh, it's Skyway?
Yes, 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 and then Renton School District as well, and connecting with them for the students part, but one of the informations that was shared was most of their students have before or after-school event with Renton Parks, so we have specifically those neighborhood schools connecting with them to do that, because I envision, like, our docent to do things, engaging, especially with the younger kids, like, what are your destinations, and how do you get there? We're not a hundred percent quite there.
We also just started, you know, obviously, seeing the very first stage. So this is kind of out in the summer, so perhaps maybe just have that make contact, so certainly, they're a neighborhood part.
Just present. If something Ralph has to ask.
No, 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 I think I was brought to my notes.
No, I, I thank you for the presentation, and very helpful, lots of basically added on the map, but certainly, I know the fact that it's involved in youth, and making sure that our seniors, or at least that older adult
Yeah, I did, I, you're probably, probably think the same thing, but and I, I even love this, I mean, one of the things that Councilman Perez and I have been talking on forever is about sidewalks, and I think one of the things that this is going to help us with is, like, you know, residents talk about what they need for sidewalks, and how their lack of activity is connected to a lack of sidewalks. I know when I walk, and if I walk down one sixteen, once we're, there's no more sidewalks, I'm always like, oh man, I hope someone's not looking at their cellphone.
Right.
And I always take my AirPods out, so I can make sure that I know what's happening around me, so that I'm not, I'm not distracted, and you're not distracted, so that I don't end up on the side of the road. So I, I love this, I absolutely love this, I think it's going to be so informative for us to hear from our residents.
I wonder if that's actually tied into
Yeah, I was going exactly with that. Receiving the data, it's going to be very informative and very important, however, we have, we know already, we have the data, but if we want to be a welcome city, we want to be a pedestrian-friendly city, we need to allocate more funding to that area. We really need to make it our priority, we really need to make sure, like, Councilmember Prince say, since forever, we have been saying, this is a priority, we cannot ask people to walk to point A to point B, or use a bicycle from point A to point B, if we're not providing safety for them. And what worries me is that this is an important program, but I want, I want is the feedback to say, yes, this is the reason why we're not doing it, but we don't have the resources to provide a solution, which is, has been over and over the problem, that they come and ask us for the sidewalks, and then we say, yes, but we don't have the funds for this, because sidewalks are very expensive, right? So I, I think we need to, and we have all that proactively with the information that the data that we're going to collect it, are we going to be solving those problems? I would be very curious to see, as Councilmember Prince mentioned, if the people that live surrounding the Cascade Elementary School, instead of taking their children, walking to the school, they're driving there, so what was the reasoning behind this, you know? They, 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 they may not, now, to be honest, with you, right now, I'm concentrating my, more my topics of Benson Hill, because I live very close to it, so here, and I know more this area, but it was very shocking to see the West Hill neighborhood. I mean, they, they're basically no sidewalk, anywhere, anywhere, you know, so, and I know that we're right now concentrated more about sidewalks, and maybe there are like ten, ten thousand other reasons where they, what they used to move to one place to another one, and that's the reason why you guys are doing this, but the two things are very, for me, that are very important. One is safety, and the other one is to offer all the benefits that we can offer to keep preventing the, the, to be one of the neighborhoods that has the most collisions out there, this is, this data is actually kind of scary, you know, because you want to protect children, you want to protect pedestrians, and, and I think we need to put some of our focus on those priorities, but thank you very much, this presentation was great, and this, this, well, I feel that we're going to the right.
I probably should let you know that we did a sidewalk survey, and that's what this, these maps are generated from, but we didn't do the survey up in West Hill, because that's not in the city currently, so that's why you probably are not seeing.
Yeah, okay, and I asked him, I say, hey, this is not the city, right?
So that's why you're not seeing this, because we didn't survey it unincorporated here, we only surveyed the city area.
Honestly, counties have been horrible with sidewalks for, since forever.
And, and, and I'm sorry, I'm tired of what you're doing, but coming to that, this is what we were saying, because since we were incorporated in the city of Renton, in the Benson Hill area, because it was incorporated in Cathy, there are no sidewalks, and we really have not put any money on there after what I think years that we have incorporated on sidewalks, and sad, that's part of the, the sad story, sorry.
Sidewalks, just to follow up on that. Across this town, as you said, we've done the study, so we're kind of doing the analysis now in terms of what are existing sidewalk issues, like, what are we missing sidewalks, and we kind of have that, that, and we're paving to come back to, there's one really locked out, which is potential transportation benefits issue. But we got to have the data deal, which is important, that shows you that there's a relief here, that will support, but obviously, the funding there, it's one of the key, you know, key pieces. It's one of the key, key pieces of, you know, the implements and the might that would be having the funding to do it. Why that would be a supply. Something would be answered by my alma. Have to look at a phase in terms of how to do it with this kind of information. But as we work through that. It's not going to be one pass and then it's going to all be fixed in two years. It's going to be a long process, but we got to start something else.
Yep.
He basically just addressed it. I would have to know this early on, but you know, it's kind of like you're, you hear something in, in your house and the walls. You're like, okay, is that whatever you like? Okay, should I check it out or not? Because if I find out, I can't afford to fix it. So you just, so this is the awareness part and we, and we educate ourselves. And then we find out, oh my God, what can we, you know, I'm, I'm just wondering as far as I know, it's early, so I'm not really asking for the answer. But you just answered it that last bit. This is just kind of, you know, taking the cover off things. So then kind of playing it from there. Priorities and things like that. And then kind of educating them to do what we can to fix as far as the youth and all of that. That's kind of.
There may be some things we could do based on the dollars. Maybe the team wants more. Part is we got to show them the data that's important.
Yeah. Okay, understood.
And to answer the West Hill area, GIS manager Josh was able to pull the crosswalk. So there is some data that you will see, but that is what the King County shared, that data set. Unfortunately, it does look like it doesn't have much.
And this is all Renton School District here, pretty much everything we're seeing.
Yes, yes. Yeah. So you'll have residents who may live within the boundary of Renton, but actually go to schools.
Yeah.
And they, they may walk up to the boundary and then from there, the disconnect of the sidewalk. Yeah.
Yeah, do the right this time.
But.
Appreciate it. Um, thank you. It's amazing. Really exciting. I live in the, I live in the Benson neighborhood and I can actually see my house from here. So it's pretty cool. Really love this interactive map and just suggestions for community contacts. Have you thought about local HOA and homeowners associations in those various neighborhoods? For, I know at least it's been a part of our associations, they are local. Okay. So they love, they would love to hear from you.
Okay.
Homeowner associations are, I think, a wealth of knowledge. And those are usually residents who've been around for a while. They're very invested, they're homeowners, which I know we want to reach out to renters and everybody else. But it might be a good hub of information in those neighborhoods. So yeah, that's my one thing. I may have had something else that made, oh, are we still be tracking collision data throughout this process? Yeah, that's done separately.
Okay. Well, we actually, actually download all the Washington State Patrol traffic accidents. So we automatically do that all the time. So we create a list of high accident locations. It's like, that's just part of our daily business that we do.
One of the things that strategically I wanted to use GIS environment and mapping is because in, in historic data sets, you could then go back and say, 2022, we did this. Five years ahead or 10 years ahead and you have this and you can then under realize. So it's like Google Images, like when you look at the history, you now currently, and you see, so that's.
On the HOA, I guess I would just throw onto that real quickly, neighborhood program, assuming it's an area where probably.
Yeah.
I don't know who was next.
The, the distracted driving collision data, you know, when you're collision, you think of car to car, that sort of thing. Let's talk about in the school, school districts and all that kind of good stuff. Is there come some sub-data that actually shows? I mean, is this all car cars? Is this car pedestrian? Is there any sub-data that shows how many may have involved school kids versus adults or whatever it is when it comes to that sort of thing?
Something that's always searchable because that's the information is on, not that they're students, but their ages on actual traffic report. So anything that's on the traffic report, you can't actually search by that.
Okay. I didn't know if it hadn't been, happened yet. Okay.
That question made me think of another question real quick. I recall, obviously, we were doing kind of a neighborhood case by case basis on reducing speeds to 20. I want to say the legislature changed that process. Is that, out of any of this, is that something we're going to be looking back and commit to it for the recommendation council on of areas where we see those sort of incidents that would justify lowering the speed or that's where we still stick with the same process we would have with.
For that particular program, we've been sticking with the petition process when people come to us. But we are proactively looking at the speed up program right now. So we're within seven different areas for speed humps. Particularly like Washington Boulevard, we're already doing some public outreach regarding the speed humps along Washington Boulevard. So that's something we'll be a little bit more proactive on because we've got the data showing that people are speeding these particular areas. And the education part of it, the enforcement part of it hasn't been working long term. So we're looking at physical devices in those particular areas where the data is showing us that we need to do something else.
And thank you for talking about that because if I think there is one complaint, number one complaint is speeding. And, and just bringing the idea that we is doable to do some speed bombs is very refreshing. Because in the past, it was a big hard no. And we have been talking a lot with the regional fire authority to accommodate to special speed bombs that it's not going to be for them an issue, but it will be lowering the traffic. And yes, there is a lot of neighborhoods, which is very fascinating because I always have said it, as a neighborhood, you first ask for those and then the neighbors are the first ones that are going to start complaining about this. But anyway, thank you for sharing that information because I remember just a couple of years ago, it was a hard no. I mean, speed bombs was like a no, 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 never.
Yeah, we definitely involve the police or fire. And we've got to the point where we have a speed hub that's able for them to navigate. So we'll be reducing response time to things like that. And it's just one more, two more, two blocks. Obviously, first person prices goes speaking. We want to start the process of education, certain processes, try. See what happens. To start, let's just go improvements of more of an advisory nature. Find whether that's effective or not, that it worked. But if it's not, then we want to make sure we have, continue to have. Say, well, I tried that. So that's the beauty of the speed.
This is a very personal note, but I grew up in an area that literally uses speed bombs every single block. You know, so you need to learn how to drive in a neighborhood like that because specifically your car, it's very, very damage. And yes, I have seen it firsthand that it does control traffic. It does damage a lot of the cars. I mean, it brings a lot of complaints in the neighborhoods. But yes, it does control traffic. But as you said, it's not the only solution. I've seen it in any other way. We have tried the what do you call their rounds about some good trial. And you know, they, this day with technology, also there is limitless, right? The things that we can do. So I'm very eager and looking forward to see some of serious what we can do to control speeding. Especially in the city. City is very tricky. Very tricky, you know?
I will say that that roundabout at the end of 116.
Okay.
He slowed down.
Yeah.
Yeah. Expressway.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Good thing about roundabouts. Intersections say stop the number T bones.
Yeah.
Vision to the lancing doors because they're going around, whereas before you said somebody.
Yeah.
T bone right. So you don't have as much damage when this thing happens. So a lot of those are reasons for. So the poles do regular T intersections.
Thank you.
Also solid land team roundabout. So this, this has been great. This is a good first start or opening this again, welcome. So glad we could steal you from Kent. And I look forward to more to come with this. So thank you very much. We'll go ahead and enjoy the whole. We'll reconvene at school council at seven o'clock. Thank you.